It's ten o'clock, I'll call it, move the order, roll call.
Parton, Clary.
Here.
Sandra Zachary.
Here.
Billy Cloud.
Here. Out of number four, we recognize Jeff, he walked right there, walked in here. Sign-in, keep going around now. Out of number five, we're still business.
Let me go first.
You have some new business to do.
They've been working on the windows, I walked with him last week and I think they are finished. They may come back and look again today, I haven't seen them come today, but anyway, they did clear a bunch of cracks in the mortar, the windows look real good. We haven't had a rain yet, but once we do, I'm hoping that it will show that a big improvement. They have worked, they've had a few rough days, but other than that, they've got, I feel like they've done a very good job, so. Larry Verdet, here and talk to my attention that we do have some rickracking your pasture.
Okay.
And this is one that the late David Wilson had wrote in March seventh, two thousand nineteen. What I need you to do is to have one, know the rise by a few, and if you get this back to me or email it to me, we'll put through that.
Okay, thanks Sandra, I appreciate it.
Go do it Sandra.
That's it, that's all I have.
Chair?
We got forty-one in jail, and we're still battling the code with employees, sent another one home this morning, so we're still battling that daily. Our misdemeanors, small thefts are still up, I mean, we're working as hard as we can, but we're getting hammered all over with our small thefts, I mean, we're solving our big ones and our small ones are harder, we're running through every database that we've got that we've paid to run all our pawn shops and things like that, and we're not finding the property, but just so you know, we are getting, our smaller thefts are rising and we know why, I mean, it's the way things are going right now, so it's not just us, it's everyone around us, other than that, we've had two pursuits coming to the county this week, one Pittsburgh County, one from Scotty County, both of them are terminated once they got into our county, one was apprehended, one wasn't, so, other than that, it's just business as normal, staying really busy.
Do you take issue with the theft of gang cameras?
Do what?
Do you take issue with the theft of gang cameras?
Yeah, I mean, we do, but what are we, I mean, trying to find them is very difficult.
Picture and a location.
Huh?
Picture, I've got his picture and I've got his location.
Yeah, you file a report, we'll look at it.
Okay.
All we gotta do is file a report.
Got his picture on, his camera, it was not a card, it was a GPS unit, went right to his house.
Yeah, this, all you gotta do is file, file a report and we'll take the information you got, we'll go try to find it.
Okay, oh, we got it back.
Okay, then, then file a report and we'll get on it.
Okay.
Come out to the office and file a report.
If I know who it is, I can get it back, believe me.
Okay.
Okay, first my love, the business goes along with out of six. Apprehensive, per se, previous meeting.
I make a motion on number six.
I second.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Parton Clary.
Yes. Out of number seven, approve blanket POs, we have any blankets today? No blanket POs today, no accident on seven. Out of number eight, discuss and consider signing off, told him not to report for his sister's office and election board.
That might be.
Yeah. Yeah. I might have heard we're free, please.
I second.
Parton Clary.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Commissioners, by team, just for a second.
Go ahead.
You're gonna notice a purchase order, it's gonna be requisition fifteen forty-six, and on that, it's gonna be for one of our employees when payroll was turned in. Our, the way, the way the time is at the jail is very difficult on the time sheets, the way it, the way it reads, but since the county pays month to month, it started in November, but the time sheet that we paid for was for October, anyways, we've submitted his pay for this month, it's after payroll, but Rhonda and Karen told us how to get it done, so it's, it's on a PO, so that's what that is for, just so you guys know.
Okay. Moving on to out of number nine, discuss and consider signing OSU cooperative's extension services agreement from the county.
That's three of them.
Unfortunately tripled it, I apologize, but one stays here, one goes to campus, and one, I forget what the other one goes.
I make a motion on number nine.
Yeah, I second.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Parton Clary.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to out of this here. Discussing, setting up an informal legal procedures to post a course for South County Road forty-four seventy D as described below. Haskell County Road forty-four seventy D is defined to extend six tenths of a mile from where a road makes a ninety degree turn at the existing cattle garden and heads west after notice to the public for three weeks in the State River Center.
I make a motion to close.
Awesome.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Parton Clary.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Can I comment?
Yes, Commissioner Verdet.
Okay, I am currently using that road to access my property, I hired Bill Nine, I hired him to, to file for easement to get to my property, I did that on September twenty-third, he has been out of the office for his bill, and what I've been told by Bill is that I can access the property, I can go to the end of that road and then walk down the section line to my property, is what I've been told by Bill, and I think that needs to be clarified before any decision is made to close that. If, if you look in the law, right here, it's very, very specific about ingress and egress. And I did get a copy of the memorandum from Christina, and she included in that, if you have any questions, to contact her, and I think that needs to be.
And what day was that on?
I got it last week.
And that was when?
Thursday or Friday last week.
But, Mr. Verdet, is it true that you also have other avenues to reach the property besides this?
That's false, that is absolutely false, she, you, you tell me, I mean, that is not true, that is absolutely not true, and if any of you can tell me a way to get to that, tell me, I seen her little comment in there about, it was further around, albeit what she said, when we accessed that, we took a boat and went across the lake, so that is not a reasonable means of accessing. But, but I'm willing to listen if you guys can come up with another way to access it. But if, you know, you need, you need permission from the property owners, whoever you think was gonna let me back there, you need, you know, you, you need to figure out how I can get back there, if there's another way.
But do you have permission from the property owners, owners now, the way you're going?
I was told by Bill Nine that I can walk down that section line, and he's an attorney.
The road got on section line?
Yep, I moved over to the section line.
How'd you do that, cross the fence?
Well, in the fence on the section line.
No.
We're not, we're not gonna argue in here, we're not gonna argue.
I, I have been, I have been accessing the property down the, he, he can probably testify, he's standing right back there, several times, and I am accessing it from this road line.
Well, Mr., do you have something to say?
Well, I mean, we, that, we don't have the authority to open up our, I mean, right now, if he's got access to it, he has to get that through the judge, don't he, that's in court? Because it's, I mean, you can't give him a.
Okay, when it started, can I say something? Claire, you correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, you correct me if I'm wrong, when it started, it was done, basically it was not done right.
Correct.
Okay, now the road, the judge did open the road.
Correct.
Now we went this far over here today to close a certain section of the road at the ninety degree turn, correct? Okay.
That's what I understand.
Okay, so we can do this, and then, my understanding, if you want to petition that part, then that's fine.
Okay, I've already, I've already got petition in to add an additional two tents, we need to do the hearing the same day.
But we need to do this starting first, so where we need, you need, the next step needs to come, there's really no discussion, really, one way or the other today, until we make this decision and then you move forward on what you want to do, is that correct?
I mean, Commissioners all done voted to close the road.
Yes, you have.
Well, that's what I say, then it has to go to the court to see if it opened back up or what, because we don't have that, you know, it has to take to the court to say that we didn't close.
What we're trying to do here now, Tim, is just go through the right process.
Yep, y'all made the motion and y'all already voted, so.
Right.
We're moving on.
Okay, we need to sign this, we need to sign that, Karen. And this is basically that we agreed to close the road today with the three commissioners, is what this is.
You're talking about four, you actually go through the, the procedures?
Procedures of this closing the road, and if you get it, if you wanna, if you wanna try to get it opened back up, then that's go to the court.
What, what, what date did you vote to close?
They just did, Mr. Verdet.
We did today.
They just voted, just here in this meeting.
And then you're going to put in the paper?
No, it ain't what it said, so, it's already been noticed for three weeks in the paper, Commissioners have already voted, they've moved to item number eleven, item eleven will be just a minute when Commissioner McClary gets there, and you'll get to discuss your petition.
When was it, when was it?
It was, it, well, put it in, we approved it, and if we have anyone that has any conflict on it, can protest it.
So it'll come out in the paper this week?
It's already been in the paper for three weeks.
No, it has not.
It has not?
Not, but the next three.
The next three weeks for their protest.
Okay.
The hearing date will be set.
The hearing date will be when?
Set, it's just not, has it been set? Not set, will be set, advertised in the paper, all landowners involved will be notified by mail, just like the, you know, the procedures is.
Okay, well, I've put in a petition to extend it, where we need to go from here.
Well, looks like that's the next item. Out of number eleven, discuss the memorandum, petition filed by Larry Verdet pertaining to legal status of Haskell County Road, no, that's not, that's the memorandum.
That's the memorandum, mainly, the memorandum of the petition that was filed by Mr. Larry Verdet pertaining the legal status of Haskell County Road, just to let everybody know that you did do the memorandum, and I think the next one.
So that's known.
That's just the discussion, no action.
So what do I need to do? Am I filing a petition?
Out of number twelve, discuss and consider Larry Verdet's petition regarding extending County Road forty-four seventy an additional two tenths of a mile.
Okay, let me, let me kinda go over that just real quickly, I looked back on the ODOT maps and that road, and actually, I've sent all three of you a copy of it, did you guys look at your email this morning? Anybody?
I did not see it in my emails this morning.
Okay, okay, I sent everybody a copy, and if you go back to, I think it's nineteen ninety-eight, that road actually extends to the next property, it's right there on the official ODOT map, and that's where I would like the road to go to, I mean, basically the road was there, apparently it has never been properly closed, I don't think it has even now, and that's where I want it to go to, it would be, it would be Pat Shane's property.
Well, in light of the fact that we have just voted to close the road, starting at the cattle garden, to me, this renders your petition null and void, because it's just out there, if this road closes, your, your two tents is just out there in the middle by itself.
Well, that petition was filed when the road was open, that petition was filed after...
Well, I understand that, and we're.
Well, what date was the road closed? Today?
The resolution was voted on today, and we're going forth with the proceedings of a hearing.
Uh-huh, okay, I mean, this is, this is Judge Henderson's order, and it, you know, it clearly states that it's a public road.
He did open it because it was not done correctly from the beginning, I believe in two thousand sixteen, am I right, and when he went to court.
Yeah, July eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
He went and opened the road back up.
Was done improperly, but in good faith, but in good faith, Haskell County Road, S A divided, six tenths of a mile from one road, that's, anyway, that, they, it was closed, but it wasn't done, the paperwork, I guess, wasn't done on it, or something, yeah, I don't know, but you, so we closed it today.
So it's officially closed today?
Yeah, so you'll have to get your, lawyer to go to a hearing to get it overturned, if that's what, I think.
So I don't have the opportunity to come to a hearing on closing road?
Yeah, yeah, there will be a hearing.
Yeah, what date is the hearing?
I'll have to get with Christine.
It'll be set sometime in the next month, because we have to have ample time to advertise.
Okay. Okay.
As far as out of number twelve, Mr. Verdet's petition, I'm gonna make the motion that be denied.
I second.
Parton Clary.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes. Out of number thirteen, discuss and consider adding sixty, eight hundred and four dollars paid three cents to the six hundred and seven thousand one thirty-nine seventeen, for a total of six hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars to CARES Act into the local.
Rhonda and Gayle have set up a subaccount for the CARES Act, and there was one payment that was left when it came in last week, so I put it on the agenda to add that to it, to, so the total amount will be six hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four, just to let everybody know that everything was in.
We did, we don't need the act, no.
No.
No act, no whatever.
This is set up. Now, the, that I put on the agenda, see where we're going, what kind of, what are we gonna put that in, huh?
Yes, we'll have to still cover that.
Yeah.
But I don't know how long it's gonna take, I think it takes a week or so to get that, the money changed back up, changed into the sovereign name, so. But we'll follow back up at that point if we do that.
Out of number fourteen, discuss and consider to approve additional funding for one quarter cent sales tax to fund the entire existing balance of four hundred and eight thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents to total fund and apply to Junior Lane debt to negotiate early payment to save approximately seventy-one thousand in future interest if early retain, attainment of debt cannot be achieved and transferred, new balance to be put on deposit in the foreign C D at Bank First to sign to Junior Lane debt, Sandra, can you kind of explain what's going on here?
Yeah, I talked to Tammy last week, and she sent another email late Friday. And I kinda put on here, we have two hundred and twenty-seven thousand that be put back in the C D, the interest that we have drawn right now is two hundred and twenty-seven sixty-one, in July, from July to November, we put in thirty-nine thousand, we budgeted ninety-three thousand six hundred for straight to three fifty-nine eight seven, eight twenty-seven sixty-one, I'll get around to that in a second. And the balance, the remaining balance for this year is forty-eight thousand four hundred, and the last month in June was sixteen hundred dollars, which brought it to forty-eight thousand, so, and that would bring a total of four oh eight two twenty-seven sixty-one, Bank First has forty-two thousand that the county didn't want to get, which rated the four hundred and fifty-two twenty-seven sixty-one, and the quarter percent balance as of the nineteenth of this month was one seventy-two six eighty-nine twelve, we take the forty-eight, forty-eight thousand four hundred out, that will leave one twenty-seven two eighty-nine twelve, and we pay a semi-annual interest, and it is one thousand eight twelve fifty, and for the year, it's twenty-three thousand six twenty-five. Okay, then, get this off straight in my head, she sent another email, basically, we cannot pay this note off early, but in, did she have something to add?
Which we knew, because the contract, I mean, we knew that, we knew that previously, and they're not, and it doesn't sound like they're gonna go back to the bondholders to ask if we can pay it off, so, we're stuck on that.
Right, and then, there is, I don't know if I made enough copies of this or not, no, this is something different, and then she brought back on that forty-two thousand, since it's been in there, it has gained, it has gained fourteen thousand nine hundred, so, it would cost more basically to do this than, we can still put the four, the forty, forty-eight thousand four hundred and go on and have the four hundred and eight thousand, and still draw the interest here at C and B, but we cannot take the four hundred and eight thousand and the forty-two thousand and put them together at Bank First because of the way it was written, unless we just open a new C D at Bank First, but we could still, and she did not know how much the interest was today, when I talked to her early this morning, so, basically, it cannot be paid off early or be more penalized than what it would be.
So question, if we wanted to pay it off early, I mean, not pay it off, but we can, we could pay their interest.
We would have to anyway.
I mean, we could pay the interest and pay it off, it's not an early payout, we're still paying, we're paying it off early, but we're still paying their interest until twenty twenty-four, correct?
No.
Yeah, it's called, what's it called?
Because the way I understood it is, we could still pay.
With penalty.
With penalty, which is basically their interest.
Right.
And that's five hundred and some odd thousand dollars, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken.
We're gonna pay that amount whether we pay it today or pay it twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's five hundred and thirty-two six eighty-seven, but basically, I mean, we could send it and hold it, but we can't put the forty-two thousand and the four oh eight together.
But, looks to me like we'd be better off to draw what interest we can on the money and off, it won't near offset it, but it will help offset some of it.
I agree.
Because right here, we, we've already. Because right here, we've already got fourteen thousand, nine hundred off the forty-two thousand.
So basically, they're probably paying more interest there for it than what we're getting here.
And I'm gonna-
I didn't even know that given interest on it.
Not just, we had this, this is what she sent late Friday. But until she gives me an interest rate, I said, it wasn't really in her department. It was early this morning when I talked to her. And it's just like for, uh, last month, it's in our paperwork today, we drew a hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-six cents more added on to this two twenty-seven sixty-one. So, I mean, we are getting over a hundred dollars, you know, every month on this. So, uh, just kind of want y'all to look at it, uh, can we take the forty-eight thousand and four hundred and put it all together as one? And have it, the four hundred and eight thousand, which be four hundred and fifty thousand, sitting there?
Question, if we put it, if we put that forty-eight forward with the two twenty-seven, with, with everything we've already got, and we put it in the CD, and we put it at Bank First, are we going to be able to move the CD that we already have to Bank First too, without being penalized?
Well, that's what I was, that was the next thing I was gonna check on once we get this today.
Because we got two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars on our CD.
Right.
Already, already at C and B. So if you were to move it, are you gonna be penalized for moving it?
Yeah, you have to let it term out, probably.
And when does it term out?
One, one year.
So-
That would be, was that the always-
Let it term out like that, that'll take up the interest, that'll get it all.
Should be always.
Yeah.
Do you think that's when we put it in?
I think we put it first.
I think we're waiting on the interest quote from Bank First.
Bank First, yeah. And like I said, Tammy, she didn't know, but, uh, I'll, I'll get that and let y'all know.
Sandra, what is the forty-two thousand hit the bank cap?
Well, I mean, that's all went about, I'm not really sure exactly what happened.
They didn't use all of it. They borrowed four fifty.
Yeah.
They borrowed four fifty. We didn't need all four fifty. All we wound up using was four oh eight. Well, they left the forty-two thousand in an account up there. If we did need it, it was there, but it's never been touched. So basically, we still have forty-two thousand dollars sitting in an account that we could have accessed if we needed to access it. But, we didn't need the four fifty when we got it, or the forty-two thousand out of the four fifty when we got it. And it's still sitting there. And it sounds to me like you said that forty-two thousand has drawn fourteen thousand dollars in interest.
Fourteen thousand, nine hundred.
So really, sitting there is fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yes.
So at the end of this twenty twenty-four, if that still continues to draw interest, we're gonna, they're gonna have to cut us a check back-
Right.
For the leftover money that, that is over the four fifty that, that we don't have.
Well, it'll be applied to the note or to the bond, I think, and we'll have to pay the four, four away, whatever the difference is.
It sounds like it's drawing more interest than we could be getting.
Exactly.
And, and that's kind of, she, like I said, she didn't know, uh, that other office wasn't open this, early this morning, but she, she will get back with us on that if we want, whatever we wanna do, so. But anyway, um-
We'll just, uh, we'll take no action on this today until we, we get the interest quote from Bank First and then we'll make a decision as to where to go from there. And it probably might be best just to wait till the, the CD terms out here.
Is Bank First the only one you're checking rates with?
Uh, we have, but when we originally put it in, I think we checked all three local banks, is that right?
Yeah.
We did.
We did.
And we did check at Bank First, uh-
And what was your interest rate?
That, I'd have to go back and look at my paperwork, but like I say, I will find out what theirs is. Yeah, it's not, I think, uh-
That forty-two thousand is drawing more, might draw more if we didn't know where it is, and so we put it in the whole thing, it looks like, you know, so we just have to-
Yeah, it looks to me like we need to just leave it where it's at.
Right, you don't need to touch it. Really, we can't touch it. I mean-
Unless, unless they take the difference and apply it to that same interest rate or whatever that is, it looks like it's a good one.
Yeah.
I, I do got one question. Does Floyd Law Firm represent Bank First?
They represent the bonding company.
Okay. Because I mean, if, if we go down through here, Floyd Law Firm is the one who's told us you can't pay off. Because they represent the bonding company.
Yes.
I just want them to know that we have, we, we don't want no dealings as, as the Public Facilities Department, we want no dealings with Floyd, Floyd Law Firm.
They're just bond attorneys.
And she, she did tell me it was the way it was written. Every, every policy and everything is written different. She said this was written a little different than you pressed on.
Of course. I mean, we can go back and show what Floyd's done, what Floyd Law Firm's done over the past twenty years in Haskell County.
Okay, we'll just, uh, no action that for the day until we get more information of what we need to do there. Out of number fifteen, Simon Corporation Transfer Corporation, six, three, four, three, five. I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Part three.
Yes.
Sanders agree.
Yes.
Really proud.
Yes. It has to work with that Floyd Law Firm, now they would bond people that draw this money.
Well, Tammy was very nice and this really kind of saved the trip and she gave us the information that we wanted and needed, uh, and I felt like within a week, we got our answer.
Part one is clear. Are you forty-five, do you?
There's a two, well, it's a one. I mean, you got two checks, you got a- I just got my check this, I got the other one. So Tim, on this payroll, basically, it was, she didn't, she didn't get a check.
No, yeah, he did not get a check. Here's how, here, here's how it works. Our payroll, and we discussed it many times, Haskell County Sheriff's Office pursued federal guidelines on a twenty-eight day pay, pay cycle. We get the county pay once a month. Therefore, when Michelle was looking at his timesheet, his timesheet is for next pay period, well, that is correct, except for the fact that we pay once a month. So his, his pay should have been in October, it should have been in November. Um, so, that was a mess up on our part due to the way our, the way our pay falls, but the way the county pays it, it's every twenty-eight, but we pay once a month. Federal guidelines say twenty-eight days.
Hey, Ryan. Hey, Ryan. I'm doing it. Can you put you on a bold statement, take this in our office? If I can make that work, if I lose you, call me back. Okay, please.
Tim, did you go to that meeting Thursday?
Fire meeting? Yes, I did.
Did y'all get that pretty well straightened out?
So, Thursday night fire meeting, what we have decided is, they are going to go ahead and purchase their repeater through the Haskell County Fire Funds. Um, and we are also going to purchase a, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mispronounce it, I know because I, gen, gen, genetec?
Is that true?
Hey. Um, what is the, what is the big generator that run off propane?
Generac.
Generac? We are going to purchase a Generac, generator to, um, run when electric and stuff goes out, so our repeaters never go down. We, the fire department is going to pay part of it, sheriff's office is gonna pay part of it, and we are going to come to the next EMS board meeting and ask for EMS to pay a third of it as well. Um, we've never had one, and when, when electric goes out, when ice storms come, sheriff's office has always had to take a little generator up there to run their repeater, but the fire repeaters are still down. So, um, the cost of it is roughly between five and six thousand dollars for the repeater. I talked to, um, Hopkins Propane, I believe they're gonna donate a tank in the propane to run it, um, to set up and, and run the generator. And, um, we'll have a generator to run our backup system, or run our system when, when fire goes out.
Where's the generator gonna be located yet?
It'll be located at the repeater site, which is south on A, well, it's way out in the country, Southon A two highway. Um, talked to the place, the fire, the, the Jack and Denny has been talking to them, and I guess they'll come in for a slab. The generator will be bolted down. We, we've never had any issues up there, knock on wood, but generator will be bolted down inside the fence. Um, and, and then we've got an electrician that's volunteered his time to hook everything up to, um, to make everything operate.
Have, have you been up there lately?
I haven't been up there lately. I was up there six months ago.
You probably need to back up because that fence is not closed in. They probably have to repair it on the south side.
The problem with that is the fence doesn't belong to, the, the site doesn't belong to us.
Right.
And Haskell County is, is very fortunate that when a tower goes up, it's, it's worded in there and it's never changed that emergency service has access to that tower for repeater location if it's deemed necessary. So, everything that we operate and use, we basically, um, are at the mercy of the company that we have. The, where, where our south repeater is, it was owned by Pine Communication for years, and Pine Communication just sold or switched their name to Oklahoma Western Communication. Um, but it's a good, it's a, it's a nice facility, um, that we've never had, we've, we've never not been able to get into where we need to get into. They're always worked with us and, um, and it's a good, it's a good location, so. But I guess Haskell County Fire has some money in the, in the county fire account. They were going to do it with all four, all eleven fire departments, um, and we explained that would be a nightmare for Karen to produce eleven different checks to pay for one three thousand dollar, um, repeater when they had money setting in the Haskell County Fire Account. Um, that, they were gonna try to, try to get, and then, the other side to it was is several of the fire departments run off of boards, so they would have to go to their board to get approval. And we're talking another month or month and a half down the road before they can get approval for that repeater, and that repeater is very important to their operations right now.
And I do want to thank, uh, Mark and Podo, the work that he has done on that also.
He's done a good job, and he's done a lot of that work at no cost to the county. I mean, he's, he's actually loaning them a repeater right now, one, one that he just had as a demo. So our fire departments can operate until they can order and get a new one in. So he's-
Now, see, the one that has the communications business and all of them.
Yes. He's been to the sheriff's office, I can't tell you how many times in the last, sheriff's office repeated in the last month, um, helping us get our stuff up and running, and I mean, he's, I'll, I'll tell you, his, his work and the time he puts in with what he deals is just very, very, very reasonable.
And he, I mean, before you knew it, he, he knew what it was and he got it done. Once we got the code to get into the door, um, you know, he got right on top of it.
Did we find the keys to all, to get access to everything?
Yes, and I sent, I sent everybody, I sent Karen, you, Billy Don, um, Tim, um, and Chris, I gave, uh, the code to Jim Pearson. So that way enough people have it, because we didn't know what the code was, because they hit that.
Well, we also explained-
And they had to replace that door.
We also explained the other night that the fire repeater, um, Bullard is, Bullard is taking care of the repeater systems, because somebody turned on the north repeater, which created an echo into the south repeater, and they were having issues and we, and nobody would tell us who turned it on. So we've now got it where we're gonna be the ones controlling it. Bullard I and, um, Jack Denny will, will help if we're out of pocket, but we couldn't have everybody going and flipping switches because it was, it created a nightmare.
I don't know how they got in, Tim.
There's no telling how many keys are out there that we don't know about. But that's getting changed, that's getting fixed too.
I don't know how they got in them too.
There's no telling how many keys are out there that we don't know about. But that's getting changed, that's getting fixed too.
He's got several invoices there, but he had.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that last one on the election board.
He looked at the bottom and he knew that, that's where they, they would have stayed, they have done there in that board, and they, they came out.
That's an iPad for board that.
Was it? Okay, it is.
That she approved.
I didn't know she was was sure. I thought he had already thought of that.
They just came in last week.
Okay. And it took a while to get it in, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay, will be no action on sixteen, did I write? Um, on seventeen, did you hear?
I'll make a motion to a jury.
I'll second.
In Blackberry?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.